All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. The time is 7:03, and I'm calling this meeting to order. We will now recite the pledge.
Pledge of the Pledge.
Pledge of the Pledge.
United States of America, each and every one of you, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, trustee Cusamano.
Yes, here, present.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
And moving on to approval of the agenda items. Clerk Posey, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go over a few proposed add-ons on the consent agenda. Proposed add-on 5C, request to approve final site development bond release for beyond self-storage. Units 2 and 3 of Lakeside Industrial Site condominium in the amount of $20,000. On the consent agenda, proposed add-on 6D, request to rescind offer of employment to the building inspector. Under new business, proposed postponement to January 13th, 2021, agenda item number 12, appointment to the planning commission. Proposed add-on, under new business, item number 16, request to replace the pump motor for the water slide in the swimming pool area of the rec center. Proposed add-on, item number 17, emergency repair of water leak in swimming pool area of the recreation center. And proposed add-on number 18, Santa Cruz and holiday event review. We also have a question to the backup material provided for agenda items 10 and 11. The action requested should be, after bids are accepted, authorize supervisor with a review from the township attorney to finalize the sale to the highest bidder, not the lowest. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda with the consented items as presented.
Second, support.
There's a motion to approve the agenda items as corrected by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And supervisor Viviano?
Yes. All right, next item is approval of the bills. As usual, we have two bill runs. Is there a motion?
Chair, I move that we approve the bills as presented.
It's part?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Trustee.
I have a question. This bill run, which has added, the original packet was dated, was printed, rather, the report on 12/8, was a total of $251,268.81. The report, which is the additional bill run, was printed today at December 16th, 2020, at 3:34 PM. And it totals $336,256.56, I'm sorry, $336,256, or 57%. I'm wondering whether or not there's, on the agenda, a proposed change to the payment accounts payable policy. Will that correct or make it so that the members of the public have an opportunity to view these with the majority of our expenditures that we're approving?
That is correct.
Is that the stated goal? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion on the motion? So there is a motion on the floor to approve the bill run by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Next item is approval of the previous meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2020.
Trustee Cusamano supports.
Is there any discussion? There's a motion on the floor to approve the previous meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2020, by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Cusamano. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. And motion carried. Next is our consent items. The consent items are routine items that come before the board at the time. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, support.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the engineering department. Would there be any reason why we would not ever return or vote to release a bond similar to these consent agenda items under 5A through C? Is there any circumstance or instance where we would, you could foresee a board declining to vote to release the bond?
No, typically, the board does approve these. That's why they're under the consent agenda.
So there'd be no reason, rational reason, not to just approve the release of a bond on your advice and your recommendation? Is that correct, Mr. Van Teflin?
I can clarify for a moment, trustee Cusamano. Mr. Van Teflin, when these items come on the consent agenda, typically, these are for projects that are either completed or partially completed to the township's satisfaction. Therefore, those bonds are no longer necessary, correct?
That is correct. These are private development projects. We give with all the departments that are performing inspections and estimate the amount of work that still needs to be done. We release the difference, and typically, the board does approve these.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing on, there's a motion on the floor from trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the consent agenda items. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. We have reached the public comments portion of our agenda. If anyone has anything to say, Mr. Ivanowski will give us directions. Please remember that there is a three-minute time limit on the, on your comments. Mr. Ivanowski?
Yes, if you're one of the attendees on tonight's board meeting, please press star 9. That will raise your hand if you have a question, and I will unmute your phone.
For another minute, also, if you're, I believe, if you are joining us via Zoom, there's also a raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen, correct? Mr. Ivanowski?
That is correct, sir.
No comments?
I do not see anyone at this time wanting to speak.
Okay, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Ivanowski. The next item on the agenda is the presentation from Plant Moran regarding our financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2020.
Thank you, I think, I think that's me. Good evening to the supervisor and to the entire board. My name is Lisa Planca. I'm a governmental audit partner with Plant and Moran, and I have been fortunate to work with the township for several years now. With me tonight is Justin Cobal, who's a senior manager, also in our governmental accounting and auditing practice for Plant and Moran. Certainly, a lot of new faces here tonight, and while we really wish that we could be there in person, as we traditionally would be, certainly appreciate the opportunity here to present to you tonight. First and foremost, before I get into the results of the June 30th, 2020 audit, I just want to say a very sincere thank you to your finance director, Stacy Smith, her entire department, the treasures department, and all of the departments we came in contact with during the audit. As you may or may not know, our process, because of the restrictions in place, because of the pandemic, we were required to perform our audit procedures in a remote environment, which we have been working in since last March. So we've had nine months to kind of get used to it, but we also understand for our clients, this was the first time through. And so we do appreciate the additional effort that that takes to prepare for an audit, and assure you that we're able to perform all of the same kinds of procedures and the same quality of audit that we would perform in person through electronic means and remote means. But again, really appreciate the effort that went into pulling things together for us electronically to be able to accomplish this, since I'm sure you appreciate the audit is a significant undertaking, to prepare the underlying financial data that goes into that financial report and the supporting schedules that we would request, and be able to really accomplish the audit according to the same planned scope and timing that we would have communicated to you at the outset of the process. So really, there were no significant surprises that came up during the audit. I will say that this year, the governmental accounting standards board did give us a little bit of a break. In light of the pandemic, there were a few new accounting standards that were supposed to be implemented for this fiscal year, but they issued a standard that delayed implementation by a year. So, so nothing new or different in this year's financial statements that, that you should expect to see if you compare to last year, but know that some of those changes will be reflected still in future financial statements. But again, overall, thank you again to Stacy and her entire team. We really appreciated the effort that went into that. Just from a very high level, you know, the result of the audit, of the work that we do, of the test that we perform, is ultimately for us to be able to issue our opinion on the financial statement, which is still the responsibility of the township to pull all of that data together, even though we assist with the drafting and compiling of the document. But our opinion on the financial statements is really what we're putting our stamp of approval on to indicate that the township's financial statements are in accordance with all of the applicable governmental accounting standards. So we did once again issue what is referred to in auditor speak as an unmodified opinion, which means there's nothing that came to our attention that would indicate that the statements are not in accordance with all of the standards that they should be. So that is the highest level of assurance we can provide, even though it might sound a little bit negative, but it is the highest level assurance in what you would expect to see every year on your financial report. Instead of going through every single page of that financial statement document, and we're always happy to answer questions if any of the board of trustees would have more specific questions in the details of the statements, we thought this year that we would give a more visual presentation of the financial overview for the township. So in just a minute, Justin will share his screen and pull through a few PowerPoint slides that we put together to give a high-level overview of the financial condition. Again, just from a qualitative standpoint on the audit, we would say that the audit process itself went smoothly. There were no surprises. There were no disagreements with management, no significant changes from what would have been in place last year. I would say the, the good news of 2020, if we can come up with anything being such a challenging and difficult year, is that we did see that Macomb Township continued to be a community that is growing, that was investing in infrastructure of the township in order to meet the needs of a growing community. The township continues to be well-funded when we look at legacy costs, and Justin will have a slide on that as well, when we look at pensions and retiree healthcare compared to neighboring communities and communities throughout the state. The township does have a high level of funding within those pension and retiree healthcare funds. And also, we would say, you know, the future, there's obviously uncertainty of exactly what 2021 will bring, given the current economic conditions, but the township is well-positioned, given the fund balance that's in place as of June 30th of 2020. So we will, I will leave it at that and just let Justin take over from here. And certainly, it's a little difficult to answer questions during the presentation in this format, so it may be best just to leave it open at the end if there's things you'd like us to go back to or get into in greater detail. Justin?
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen now. Could everyone see that? So much. So I'm going to flip through a couple of slides. The slides do focus on a variety of different topics here. They'll start off with the governmental funds, and then we'll talk about fund balance, the legacy costs, as Lisa mentioned, and then we'll wrap up with a quick slide on the water and sewer fund. This first graph focuses on the governmental funds revenues from the period June 30th, 2018 through June 30th of 2020. You'll note that from 2019 to 2020, the revenue was relatively stable. The township's largest revenue source, property taxes, did increase by approximately $925,000, or 5.4% due to increases in taxable value. State sources, those increased modestly in the current year. And then, as you kind of scan through the rest of the revenue components, you'll note that there's a couple of different areas that decreases in, in the revenue sources. And that was primarily a result of the impact of, of the pandemic, specifically related to parks and rec, and then licenses and permits, as a lot of that activity was slowed during the fourth quarter of the township's fiscal year. From an expenditure standpoint, you'll note that there's been a significant increase from 2018 to 2020. Overall, there was no significant change in the township's cost structure for 2020. If you look at the second line from the bottom, you'll see the most significant component that increased, and that's capital outlay. In 2018, that was just about $3.2 million, and that has increased to $10.3 million. And as Lisa mentioned, there's continued investment in the township, and that's necessary, and that's exactly what has happened here. In the current year, there was, the most significant investment was the investment in the fire station for about $6.8 million. This is a snapshot of the governmental funds' fund balances. It really provides information about the funding levels within each of the different funds, and this is, again, at the governmental fund, so it includes all the governmental funds. There's some different components I wanted to just point out. Unassigned fund balance, that top blue bar, that is resources that are available to the township as of June 30th, 2020. The assigned fund balance, that yellow middle column, that represents the township's plan for spending. There's a couple of different components I'll just highlight. The township did approve to use about $8 million of fund balance in 2021, so that's included. And then there's a variety for capital projects, parks, and then law enforcement as well. The restricted component, that last orange bar, that represents restricted fund balance. And that would be for monies that are earmarked for specific reasons under legal enforcement. That would be police and fire, debt service, and other capital projects, specifically unspent bond proceeds. So overall, you can see here that there has been an uptick in some years, but then there's also a planned decrease in fund balance. So again, as Lisa mentioned, the city, or the township continues to be well-positioned, especially as going into this pandemic where there's so much uncertainty, that the township continues to be well-positioned into the future.
Oh, Justin, can you go back for one second there? Just one thing I might clarify very quickly. When we refer to governmental funds, that does include the general fund, special revenue funds, and then capital project and debt service funds. So essentially, it's all of the funds of the township combined, except for the water and sewer fund and pension and OPEB. So again, that's why we see these restricted funds within fund balance, because those are, Justin described, a lot of them are, but they're, they're resources that do have some sort of legal restriction on them. So again, just to kind of clarify that, since it's our first time going through this format.
Thank you. Switching gears to legacy costs, this first graph focuses on the township's pension funding. There's two components to the net pension liability that's reported by the township. On the left side, you'll see a turquoise graph. That's the total pension liability. That's actuarially calculated. And then the orange bar graph is the planned net position. That's assets that are set aside to really fund and pay for those, that liability that's been calculated by the actuary. You'll note that since 2018 to 2020, there has been a slight uptick in that funding percentage at 76.5% at June 30th of 2020. Again, well-funded, and it would be in line with your peers, in, in some cases, higher than national averages in the local government. So this continues to get a lot of attention from the state and nationally. So again, the township is well-positioned here from the pensions funding. Switching gears to the retiree healthcare fund, the township is really best-in-class here. You'll, you'll note very similar components. The planned net position in this case is over 100% funded, and that is outstanding to have that money set aside to really fund your retiree healthcare into the future. So again, very consistent components here, your total OPEB liability, that is again calculated by the actuary, and then the orange bar graph is the planned net position set aside for those liabilities. And the last graph we have here is, focuses on the water and sewer fund. The top line is the operating revenue. Thankfully, that is above the operating expenditures, which is necessary to really fund the operations of the water and sewer fund. And then I've included the, the bottom line, which is operating expenses excluding depreciation. And I exclude that because that is a non-cash item. So it's important that you have a gap between the bottom line and that top line, because that really funds the township's water and sewer system's long-term strategy in an effort to make sure that you're investing in that system and really just have the appropriate reserves to tackle any type of emergencies and future capital spending that's planned for the water and sewer fund. So we encourage you to continue to monitor those rates going forward. Those are the only planned comments that we had for today, but like Lisa mentioned, we'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any questions or comments for our auditors?
Mr. Chairman, this is trustee Cusamano. I have a question. On section 1, which is page 2, it says, the fourth paragraph, "A significant deficiency is a deficiency or combination," and continues, "with township's internal control to be a..." We consider the following deficiency to be, the township's internal, in the township's internal control to be a significant deficiency. And it talks about the township fire retirement system. Could you describe what the importance of that term of describing it as a significant deficiency?
Yes.
And what would be the course of action to cure that deficiency?
Yes, that's a great question. So part of our responsibility as auditors, while we're not testing internal controls of the township in great detail, we are gaining an understanding of them in order to assess risk where financial statement balances could be misstated. So it's part of our planning process and part of our audit process. And if there are things that come to our attention that are significant, that could result in a significant misstatement, we do bring that to the attention of the governing body. And so this particular item relates to the most significant estimate, I would say, that goes into the township's financial statements, and that is the work that Justin described of, of an actuary to make an estimate of those liabilities for retiree healthcare and pension. And so while that's not a calculation that is performed by the township, it is still part of the responsibility and involvement of the township to look at the estimates and assumptions that go into the actuary's report to make sure they're in line with the expected actual results for the township's particular investment portfolio in particular. So a lot of assumptions go into those calculations, including those about anticipated retirement dates, mortality, and things. This particular assumption relates to the expected long-term rate of return of the assets that this system is invested in. And so in looking at it, clearly, it's an issue that has been developing over the past few years as we're looking more closely at these, at these assumptions that are used among all different communities. And really, looking at what has been used by the township in the report for this year's financial statements determines that it was actually more conservative when we look at the actual performance of the fund, and then also looking at the expected long-term rate of return from another of sources, a number of sources that we look at. So again, we acknowledge that this is, it's inherently an assumption, but it should be within an expected range. And honestly, the township was being more conservative on this than was necessary and resulted in what would be a significant understatement of that liability. I'm sorry, overstatement of that liability.
Okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is that in the wheelhouse of this board? Or is it under the sole control of the pension, firefighter pension board control? Who, who sets that? Do we, by any vote of this board of trustees, do we affirm that projection? Or are we basically subordinate to their decision by statute in what their actuary says or what their projections are? Did I state that?
You did, and I'm, I am pausing, because I'll be honest, I'm not certain if that is legally within the purview of the pension board. Clearly, the actuary is presenting those results, so I'd need to defer my answer on that.
My understanding, my understanding is that that is, those items are specifically under the pension board, as you point out, trustee Cusamano. I don't think it prevents us from opening that line of discussion with pension board and finding out if they have specific reasons to be on the more conservative side.
Mr. Chair? I, I'm a member of the pension board, a statutory member of the pension board, and we had a conversation about this finding in our last meeting. And essentially, what, what we're talking about here is guessing how good our investments are going to do in the market in the mid and long-term future. And the pension board has taken a conservative approach. We could make it look like we're even better funded by guessing that we're going to get 9% or 10% returns every year and just have a lot of money, and therefore, we're exceedingly well-funded. We've perhaps taken a bit of an opposite approach. We want to be very conservative. So we're estimating 5% returns so that we can make sure that we're going to meet our pension needs. If we outperform those expectations, if the market outperforms them, we'll do better, and our pension fund will actually be a higher funded rate than is being shown in this presentation. So it doesn't change how our investments are doing. It doesn't change anything other than how it looks on paper. If we guess we're going to get a lot of, you know, big-money returns, we can make it look really good on paper and say that we're really well-funded. If we guess low and say that we want to be conservative, estimate on the conservative side of the rate of return, I think we're actually putting ourselves in a safer spot as a community.
So if I can, one question on behalf of the residents who might be listening. It does not, also does not affect the contributions each year, which are set by contract, correct?
Right, that's correct. And we have a small millage rate that funds pension, the fire pension, retirement, and so forth. A very small part of the millage. Doesn't affect the contributions. In fact, if we do outperform our 5% estimated rate of return, contributions will be less, and the tax rate will be less. And we hope that we outperform it. We even almost expect to outperform it, but given the nature of the, the economy, and given the nature of a certain amount of uncertainty moving forward, we thought it was more prudent to be on the conservative side of guessing how these investments are going to do. We just want to be conservative, and, you know, we'd rather err on the, on the low end and be surprised that our investments return a greater amount than estimate high and find ourselves running short in the future. We were too conservative, but when it comes to funds, but we want to be, we'd rather be on that conservative end.
And we understand that. We, we understand that, as accountants, the, the safety of being conservative. And, you know, certainly, we are also aware of communities that have two valuations done. One that's done purely for funding purposes, that uses a more conservative rate to make sure that those contributions are, you know, to your point, are well, are matching, you know, and making up for any future years that don't meet expectations in terms of rate of return, and then have a separate valuation that falls more in line with what we're looking at purely from an accounting perspective. Since we would, I mean, if you were trying to use 10% or 11%, you might have a similar finding that says now you're being too aggressive. Since we would, I mean, if you were trying to use 10 or 11%, you might have a similar finding that says now you're being too aggressive. So there are just certain acceptable ranges in accordance with GASB 68 that we're trying to adhere to. But again, we certainly appreciate the the motivation of trying to be conservative.
Just one last comment on this. We did vote at the last pension board meeting in discussions about this issue to raise our rate of return estimates slightly so that it's more favorable toward the GASB formula for determining, you know, the financial position, but very slightly, you know, we still want to stay on the conservative side. We'd rather have a finding against us saying you guys are being extra careful.
Yes.
And that's kind of the direction we decided to go.
Yes. Yep. And that's certainly what this finding is discussing. It isn't something that's saying, you know, day to day accounting is is done improperly. It truly is that coming down to that assumption and that matter of judgment.
Trustee Kuzmano, does that answer your question?
Well, just one last question to the accountant. What is the purpose of GASB statements number 68? If not to keep everyone on a consistent playing field about what what are proper percentages and evaluations of return and what are not? That's the question.
Yeah, so GASB 68 was intended to bring that liability on to into being recorded within the financial statement. So previously, the funded status of pension and retiree healthcare was more of a footnote disclosure. And GASB 68 brought it so that that liability is actually recorded, not within the general fund, but in the financial statements that are done on more that long term basis of accounting to bring it again, to bring it more front and center and show that as a true liability or asset.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Board members, is there anything further?
I do have one question, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the healthcare slide, where obviously it looks like we're in a good position to be overfunded. Is there a lower threshold that we don't want to go under? You know, so if there's any way to maybe not keep that trajectory of overfunding, we can kind of keep it a more level trajectory, maybe we can use those funds somewhere else. Is there a number we don't want to fall below or something like that?
Yeah, it is a challenge because it is such a long term focus, which is why we encourage communities not to overreact to either when it goes overfunded or underfunded in a given year, it's more keeping an eye on that trend. So I think, you know, well, Justin said it's it's best in class to be fully funded. Ideally, we'd always just hover right around 100%, but since it is truly a snapshot in time that we're showing you, you know, in a given year, communities that report on a June 30th year end versus a December 31st year end could show widely different results just based on the market. So I don't have a particular number in mind, but again, I think it's just keeping an eye on that trend. If it continues to go up and up and up, I think it is important to to look at at the contribution level. And if it's, you know, if it falls below 100%, don't overreact, but just keep an eye on it.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Anything further? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, just one last, I guess, thought related to Trustee Lucido's comment. You know, one of the things that has challenged local communities over many, over the decades has been making promises for benefits down the road, but not setting aside resources to pay for them down the road. And so we ended up in many across the entire country with communities that had made those promises. And then the down the road came and they weren't adequately funded to fulfill them and left those communities devastated. And I think it's our objective, many laws have changed as a result of that, but it's like our objective to leave no mess for the future. That we'd rather be, you know, make sure we're paying as we go, make sure that we're budgeting conservatively, making sure that our that we're funded so that 20 years from now, our people who succeed us aren't sitting here trying to figure out how to clean up a mess. So I think we should be very proud as a community that we have funded our retiree healthcare fully. So there's not a gap for the future and that we're estimating conservatively and we're going to fund our pensions and our other future liabilities in a manner that is not going to create a burden for our for our constituents and our citizens in the future.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. I'll just echo your comments. I agree with them wholeheartedly. In fact, in the discussions I had with Plant Moran leading up to this meeting and when they reviewed the financial statements with me, I asked questions along those lines as well, wanting to fully understand when do our fund balances become too big or too small? Because I too want to be on the very high side of the range that is recommended, if there is a recommended range. I don't ever want to become to our financial obligation for retirees or for anything that is speculative of us mother. Yes, with that being said, I don't think there's any more questions from the board. I want to thank Plunkett, I'm sorry. I want to thank Plant and Moran for all of their hard work. I appreciate it very much. And I look forward to speaking with you in the very next meeting.
Thank you. Same here. You both, you all have a wonderful evening and a wonderful and healthy holiday season. We look forward to speaking with you soon.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Well, moving on, that brings us to new business. Item number eight is a request to approve the pay construction estimate, pay estimate number 13, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning CCTV, CCTV investigation contract modification number four, project number 0249-0162, an amount of $22,997.50 to FightTech Infrastructure Services. Is there a motion?
No.
Support. Mr. Wayne, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, Water and Sewer is in front of you requesting permission to pay for FightTech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $22,997.50. This will be pay estimate number 13. This is part of our CIP program, which was previously approved by the board, Water and Sewer, as well as engineering are recommending that we move forward with this pay cert. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none, there's a motion to approve the pay construction estimate number 13, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning CCTV investigation contract modification number four, project number 0249-0162, an amount of $22,997.50 to FightTech Infrastructure Services. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey, would please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmano?
Yes.
The Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviana?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Wayne. Item number nine is a request to purchase SCBA washer in the amount of $28,690.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move on to purchase of the SCBA washer. Support.
Chief Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this evening, I'm requesting your approval to purchase one SCBA or self contained breathing apparatus washer. SCBAs are the air packs that are worn on the back of the firefighters and allows the firefighter to breathe the air contained within the tank once they enter the burning homes. Our current method to wash the SCBA packs is to use the garden hose and SCV scrub brush. SCBA masks are washed in a five gallon bucket of warm water mixed with a cleaning solution. It's a time consuming process and is difficult to completely sanitize the units. The washer that I'm proposing will allow us to wash the packs and the masks in a much, much more efficient and safer manner. Will meet the current NFPA or the National Fire Protection Association standard for cleaning and maintenance of SCBA. In addition to the SCBA and masks, it'll provide us the ability to wash our helmets, boots and gloves. The washer is capable of washing up to 14 SCBA per hour, 21 helmets per hour, 56 face masks per hour, 60 pairs of boots per hour and 120 pairs of gloves per hour. It'll wash the gloves and boots in three minutes and SCBA face masks and helmets in eight minutes. This item was not included in the current budget. A grant was written and submitted for the purchase of one. However, we did not receive that grant. Within the current budget, the purchase of three additional Lucas chest compression devices was included and $65,000 was budgeted for the purchase of those devices. Those devices were able to be purchased utilizing COVID funds from the county, thus leaving the $65,000 available in the current budget. So with that, I'm recommending using $28,690 of those funds to purchase the washer. If approved, the washer will be located at Fire Station One. There's only one authorized dealer that covers the entire state of Michigan. Competitive bids were not able to be obtained due to this and due to the fact there's no similar product available. We've done business with the vendor in the past and they've always delivered, installed and provided the necessary training as required. I did include the confirmation of process letter from the purchasing specialist. With the current current environment that we're operating in, this washer will give us the ability to sanitize and ensure that we're doing everything possible to make the jobs of our personnel as safe as possible. Therefore, I'm recommending the purchase of one SCBA washer, including installation and decontamination detergent in the total amount of $28,690 and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief Phillips, is there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just got one question. Chief Phillips, do we know what the life expectancy on this machine is? I mean, is this something that, you know, can last 50 years? Is it replaced every 20 years or, you know?
Everything contained or that we've been told is 20 to 25 year lifespan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I understand that is this a large unit that's going to be fixed at one firehouse? And is it anticipated that the equipment will be brought there from other facilities to be serviced?
Correct. It'll be located at Station One, so it's central in the township. And then the other three stations will move the equipment to the washer when needed.
And one last question, chief. Again, you know, we're not experts in in first response in firefighting. In your professional judgment, is the purchase of this equipment reasonable and necessary to protect our first responders in in their breathing apparatus devices to keep them sanitary and safe for them to use? It's a yes or no question.
Yes, especially what we're operating in right now.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Kuzmano? Anything else? Hearing no more discussion, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, I believe, to purchase the SCBA washer for $28,690. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviana?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 10 on tonight's agenda, the sale of land at 49169 Marcella. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move items 10 and 11 in one motion.
Trustee Kuzmano would support that.
Well, regarding items 10 and 11, I put those, I requested those to be on tonight's agenda. I, along with Treasurer Gillette, Clerk Posey and some of our staff, engineer, our planner, we have been discussing and reviewing our land assets. We have a number of land pieces of property on our on our rolls that the township has no the township has no intention to use them for public purposes whatsoever. These properties we received during the 2008, 2009 financial crisis and ended up in our hands as a result of tax foreclosure. These two particular lots are effectively build ready. They are single lots for single family homes. We have no purpose of owning them and I would like to get them back into private ownership so that the somebody can own them, somebody can build a house if they choose, and then we can add that to our tax rolls. That is why, so one more thing I'm going to add to that, to my comment there. There's going to be more of these in the coming months. We do have a few other single family lots that we can look at disposing of, things that we don't need in the future. And we are doing a systematic review of all of our land assets and making a determination if they have public purpose or not have public purpose. And we'll be discussing some of the larger tracks with the board as we analyze each one. But this is the first step in cleaning up our inventory.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, first, thank you for leading that effort. These, having parcels of property that can be moved out into the public, not only is unnecessary from our perspective, but the revenue we get from disposing these properties, selling these properties can be used to benefit residents. So we have, you know, roads we need to pave, we have recreation programs we need to fund. We have, you know, police and fire essential services that we need to do. And, you know, the fact that we've got a number of properties that are sitting there that are not providing a public purpose. I think this is a great step in moving them from into the public use, into something that benefits the citizens. I know the whole goal of this is, how is this piece of property benefiting the citizens? And if it's not benefiting the citizens, what can we do so we can move that asset into a way that does benefit our, the citizens of our township? So I really appreciate the fact that you've taken the lead in in getting an inventory of why do we have these properties? And then sitting here for years that have not benefited anybody? And how can we move them in a way that will benefit the citizens? So thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. And to add to that, one more thing I did intend to say. As we dispose of these properties, beginning with these two, I'm going to ask finance to track all the proceeds. All these monies will end up in our general fund, but we're going to keep a separate accounting of them. And we will, we will determine a way of using all of these funds to the most public good. Whether it's investing back into our sidewalks or working with the county to improve our roads or working on some of our parks or new parks if we can get them. Everything we make from land sales will go directly back to the public in one way or another. That is my intention.
One quick question. Are we going to sell these through real estate? Are we going to put them out to bid? How are we going to actually physically sell them?
We're making a case by case determination. These two, we are basically putting them out. We're inviting bids. We listed the minimum bid to be the basically double of the SEV, the true cash value, as is determined by our assessor. And we're hoping to actually get more than that. So we're inviting bids on these and as soon as we approve them, they're going to go out on the website, go out on a mitten. We're hoping to get some interest. You know, people have already called on at least one of the properties in the past, asking if we were ever going to sell it. Those people have been told to keep an eye on the on the website and keep an eye on mitten and these properties should be appearing.
Those will be closed bids and then there'll be a day we're going to pick to open a bid.
We are working with the purchasing specialists. We are following our normal standard procedure that's been established by the purchasing policy and selling assets.
Good. So we will not incur any real estate costs by doing that program.
That is the hope.
Good.
At least for these.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Were there costs associated with maintaining these properties? And if so, who bore them?
Actually, funny enough, Trustee Kuzmano, I believe, and if Mr. Hickey's on the line, he can confirm this. These two particular parcels, we've been paying taxes on them, which is not normally the case for township owned properties, but because these have been assessed in the past, they continue to be assessed. And we've been paying taxes on these for well over 10 years. Yes, there's been, there's been costs in addition to cutting the grass and keeping them from going wild, which I believe has been unnecessary from time to time. I think it's, that's one of the reasons I focused on these two right away.
Mr. Chairman, one last question. Was there any rational reason that you've come across? Was there any rational reason that you've come across why previous administration did not dispose of the property for the same reasons that you described today?
Is there no? I can find no rational reason why we would have pulled onto these two properties.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on that for Mr. or Trustee Cusmano. There were numerous discussions in the previous four years with regards to these properties and the fact of the matter that we were paying taxes on it was brought up. I actually reviewed it with Mr. Hickey and the supervisor several times in our township. But yet there was no, there was conversation of doing something about it, but there was never any action taken.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Is there any further discussion on these motions? So hearing none, there is a motion on the floor from Treasurer Drollet, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the sale of both four-nine-one-six-nine Marseille and four-six-five-three-six Vienna Drive. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. And while this being postponed until January thirteenth. Moving on to item thirteen. Is a request to extend the moratorium or permits to grow marijuana. Your motion.
I move. Board?
I ask for this moratorium to be extended. I'm putting it before the board tonight. The previous board had concerns regarding grow operations in our community. I still hold those same concerns. We have not had the opportunity to address it. I think both having the effects of COVID campaign and the transition to a new board all have contributed to delaying any action. So what really brought this to a head was two weeks ago, maybe just under two weeks ago, the state police raided a home in our community. They took out fifty, a hundred and fifty-eight marijuana plants out of a residential home basement in the Compton Township. And for those who are unaware, if you are going by the legislation passed under the Medical Marijuana Ballot Initiative, if a person is licensed both for themselves and as a caregiver for five patients, the most that they could grow would be seventy-two plants. This particular person was growing more than double the legal limit. The person was not permitted by the township. The person actually had, and I believe Mr. Maples could weigh in if I'm wrong on this, only had a permit for him, or only had an application from the state for himself and for two patients. So he should have only been growing thirty-six plants, meaning he was nearly triple, or five times the legal limit for himself. I personally cannot sit by idly and allow our homes to be turned into marijuana operations. It seems that if we do not protect our residents, that no one else will. I understand that the state has passed legalized marijuana in some circumstances. However, the township still has a role to play in what happens in our neighborhoods. So I am asking for this board to extend the moratorium to give us the opportunity to explore what those means are and to adopt any new ordinance changes in the future so that we can protect our residents and our community from the harm that comes from having these operations in our communities. Is there any, any questions?
Mr. Chair? It's actually a very difficult issue right now, given the numerous ballot proposals have been passed by voters on the issue of marijuana. But what's, and so it's actually a challenge for communities to deal with those initiatives that have been passed. What seems clear to me is that we need to respect the will of the voters at the same time protecting the citizens' right to peaceful enjoyment and use of their property. You know, commercial grow operations really don't belong in somebody's neighborhood. So I think it's important that we, that we take the time to work on the on what policy we're going to have moving forward and get it right, so that we can respect what the citizens have voted for, and also do what we can to make sure that our citizens are protected from abuses that might take place. So I'll support the extension of this, of the moratorium while we look toward a way that we can accommodate the changing environment and protect the citizens from unnecessary commercial use in their, in their, in their home subdivisions and communities.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Good question. What's your timeframe on this? Where do you want to go with this?
This is a four-month moratorium. Four months, in some respects, is not a lot of time. However, I, I did have a Zoom conference with our neighboring communities today, Chesterfield and Shelby Township. They are equally concerned with this type of operation in their neighborhoods. They have both undertaken some steps. So we have already agreed to an exchange of information in order to, perhaps that we can all benefit from each other's best practices. We will look at that. I'm going to work with Mr. Maples, with our attorneys, and figure out what ordinance changes we can enact, and hopefully before this four months is up, we can at least put the beginning pieces together of some common sense protections, as Treasurer Drollet described, that both respect the will of the people of the state of Michigan, but also provide the protections that I think our residents respect of us.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I think Mr. Trustee Oliver was asking, how long does the moratorium extend?
Four months. The original moratorium was four months, and the extension is already the same amount of time.
Four months. I would just like to piggyback on what Treasurer Drollet indicated. You couldn't have a moonshine operation. This, there was some regulatory structure to the Medical Marijuana Act. And, and the Supreme Court, as my understanding, and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, said that there is a role to play for townships in zoning and permitting these operations, especially if where Detroit Edison is giving reports of blown fuses and and other threats to the health, safety, and welfare of residents in subdivisions. So I would also support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Anything further from the board? Hearing no more discussion. There is a motion on the floor to extend the moratorium permits to grow marijuana by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Onto item fourteen. A accounts payable policy. This should be a change in the accounts payable policy.
Mr. Chairman, I had a break in my audio. Was there a second?
I think they might be having some difficulties.
That's to Trustee Cusmano. Is that correct, Mr. Avanowski?
Yes, I will go downstairs to check, check a look.
Audio check, Cusmano.
All right. There we go. Plug that, take that off. All right, I think we're back. Sorry, everybody. Trustee Cusmano, can you hear us?
Trustee Cusmano checking in. Audio work. Thank you.
Audio work. Sorry, sorry, folks, our speakers ran out of power, so. Yeah, we're just on the one, so if the board members in the room, if you're going to speak, please speak loudly and clearly just a little bit further away from our microphone. Okay, moving on. That was fun. All right, Ms. Smith, are you on the line? Stacy, can you unmute yourself, please? She should be able to mute herself.
Oh, yeah, she's on the phone.
She's on a phone?
Yeah.
Oh, hold on. Hold on, Stacy, when Bob gets back up. Bob, can you unmute Stacy, please?
Yes. I sent a, is she on the phone?
Appears to be. There she is. There she is.
Can, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay. Good evening. Before we tonight, there's some proposed changes to the accounts payable policy. Currently, the original list is generated and sent to the Board of Trustees eight days before the board, before the board meeting. This means that most invoices coming in after that date will have to wait until the next board meeting to get paid, unless they are of an emergency nature, or they have maybe a net thirty that they're due before the next meeting. That, that would mean that they are potentially sitting in our office for about three to four weeks before getting a check issued or put on the next meeting. I did want to let the public know and maybe some of the new board members that the public can always view the bill run virtually at the same time as the board on our website located under the Finance Department, and then there'll be a list of bills. Once the original list is sent out to the Board of Trustees and department heads, our list is also posted on the website. I'm proposing that we change the original list due date to two days before the board meeting, which will allow finance to get these additional items processed for payment in a timely manner. And then the goal is to hopefully not have anything on the additional list. If we were to have anything on the additional list, as an example, would be today, the HR department received some Delta dental bills which are due by January first and cannot wait until the January thirteenth meeting. So if things like that pop up between Tuesday and Wednesday before a board meeting, we would have to add those to an additional list, but it should be much smaller than it currently is. If you have any questions at this time, I'll be happy to address them.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there any questions from the board? All right, hearing none. Get my glasses back on so I can read. There is a motion to adapt the change in accounting, accounts payable policy from Treasurer Drollet, supported by Trustee Nevers. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That motion carries.
Chairman, if I may, just to comment on that particular item. For any resident that is looking for our bill runs, you can find that list under Board of Trustees, but also under the Finance tab on our website, list of bills, and then it lists, currently you'll see all bill runs that are given to the board. But going forward now, you'll, you should expect to see one that includes bill runs for that board meeting. So just to help you locate that, should you want to. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Moving on to item fifteen, discussion on payment of invoices prior to January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one Board of Trustees meeting.
Move the discussion forward.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
I was proposing that since there are four weeks between this meeting and the January thirteenth meeting, I anticipate having some invoices that will have a due date, or that come in and that have a due date prior to the check run of the fourteenth of January. So in my proposal, I was asking to possibly create a list of bills that would go out on Monday, January fourth, to all board members and department heads. Or I'm sorry, on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, January fifth, to all department heads and Board of Trustees, giving them two days until the seventh to review it. And if they had any concerns, they could contact me or my department to have those invoices actually polled or reviewed. If they have no objections, then on the seventh of January, I would go to the three full-time elected officials, township supervisor, clerk, and treasurer to ask permission to do a check run dated for the seventh for any of those invoices that really can't wait until the fourteenth. So it would be a special check run, something a little out of the ordinary, but just because there are so many weeks in between these meetings. We can change those dates if the board would like, but that's my suggestion. Entertain any questions.
So I guess I have a question. Would we then approve that bill run at the next Board of Trustees meeting?
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, yes. And then you would officially approve that at the next board meeting on the thirteenth, and we would include that on our summary of bills for approval summary page.
Just to try and add a little clarification for the board members. Because there's such a gap, as she explained, we don't want to pay anything late. She would send you the entire list that she is intending to pay. And if there is any objection administratively, those items would be polled, and they will not be paid. And we will deal with them at the next board meeting. However, in the meantime, anything that's not objected to by any single board member would proceed to get paid. I believe you said January seventh, Stacy?
Yes.
Then we would retroactively approve that bill run at the first meeting for January.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the proper language to describe what the board would be doing would be ratifying your actions to pay the bills pursuant to our authorization on today's day on January seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you, that concludes my comment.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. I believe we need to put all of this in the proper form of a motion?
Yes.
Treasurer Drollet, you want to take a crack at that?
Yes, I moved that we ratify the future bill run that Frank said. That's not quite right.
That's not quite right. I think you have to, we have to move to allow. Sure.
Motion, maybe motion to authorize the township supervisor, clerk, and treasurer to approve the checks to be issued on January seventh, two thousand twenty-one with ratification at the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Like she's done this before.
That's the motion I'm making.
That's the motion I'm supporting.
That's the motion I have to figure out how to repeat. Can you say it one more time, Stacy, so I can write it down?
A motion to authorize A motion to authorize the Township Supervisor, Clerk, and Treasurer to approve checks to be issued on January 7th, 2021, and then to be ratified at the January 13th, 2021 Board of Trustees Meeting.
Okay. So we have a motion by Treasurer Drollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to authorize the Supervisor, Clerk, and Treasurer to authorize to approve checks that will be cut on January 7th, 2021, and then to be ratified at the January 13th, 2021 meeting.
Without objection by any trustee?
Without objection, yeah, correct. If they are not objected to by any board member.
Without objection by any...
So add it.
We noted.
So if there's no more discussion, Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, or I'm sorry, Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzmato?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. That was fun. Okay, number 16, we have one of our add-ons from the Parks and Rec.
And 17 is one motion because I believe they're related and we asked questions about both at the same time.
Okay. I have support for Treasurer Drollet's motion. Mr. DeCaro?
Yes, sir.
Would you please give us a summary of items 16 and 17, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to repair and replace the pump motor at the water slide in the swimming pool area of the rec center. This is the original pump for that feature. We received three quotes on this item ranging from $6,600 to $9,041. I've included the quotes and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialists. At this time, we're recommending we purchase the motor from North End Electric Motor and Pump Repair for $6,600. I'm available to answer any questions.
You want to speak, Mr. DeCaro, on the second item on it, which is the water leak in the swimming pool at the same time?
Oh, okay. So the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to pay for an emergency repair for the pool area at the rec center. We had a leak that was detected in the surge pit that needed immediate attention. We called in Advanced Pools. They estimated the work with time and material to be just under $5,000. I contacted Supervisor Viviano, who approved us to proceed with the repair. Advanced Pools showed up on December 10th. During the repair, the damage proved to be a little bit more extensive than anticipated. Advanced Pools worked an additional day. The job was completed on December 11th. Total cost for the repair, $6,525. And again, we are requesting to pay Advanced Pools $6,525 for the repair to the leak in the surge pit. And again, I'm available to answer any questions for that.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Board members, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask Mr. DeCaro, could you just indicate how old the pump for the water slide is? Some people may not know what it means to be the original pump, how old that is.
So again, it was the original pump when we opened in 2004. So we've had 16 years of, 16 and a half years of life out of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. DeCaro. Perhaps you've answered it already. What is the life cycle for this equipment, including the pumps and the fittings for the swimming pool area? Is there routine inspections done in anticipation of an overhaul? So that perhaps before the end of the life cycle can be bid under the purchasing policy?
Well, the life expectancy obviously differs between each piece. So you take the water slide, the water slide is only used so many hours per day where the spa is used, the pumps are running 24 hours a day. So it's really hard to, you know, determine when that's going to be. But usually, the rule of thumb is about 15 years. So we're pleased to get, you know, more than that out of it. We usually budget, because the center's now 16 years old, going on 17 years, the last few years, we budget one motor per year in anticipation of, I mean, as much as we use them, they're going to wear out.
And we've never experienced any downtime during these change outs of pumps, have we?
For the most part, we don't, but well, we have, on the leak, we had some downtime. That's the other issue, that's not the pump. But yeah, we can usually swap them out pretty quick.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato.
Mr. Chairman, one question, please.
Sure.
Sal?
Yep.
Speak up, Charlie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sal, a couple of things. One, have we ever worked with this vendor?
Yes. To be honest, you don't have a lot of vendors to deal with. I mean, pretty much Advanced Pool and B&amp;B Pools is the only two vendors that we deal with for chemicals and for, you know, replacements and things like that. Oh, yeah, we've used them many times.
Thank you. And one last comment. Thank you for that pictures on the pool and the leak that really spelled out clearly, so I appreciate. Well, again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Anything further? All right, seeing there's no more discussion, there is a motion on the floor from Treasurer Drollet, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the pump replacement for the water slide swimming pool area of the rec center, and also to approve the emergency repair of the water leak area of the rec center. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmato?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Item 18 is a review of our Santa Cruz and the holiday event review. Mr. DeCaro, how did things go last weekend?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Things went very well. A little bit of history. In mid-November, when the State Health Department mandated, brought down some guidelines, it obviously was going to make a major change to our tree lighting afterglow event that we normally have. After meeting with the supervisor, it was very clear that he wanted to have something. And, you know, we want to bring in the holidays like we normally do. So we met with staff, and we came up with a number of ideas. And then we met again with the three full-time elected officials, and we all came up with the Santa Cruz and the Silverbells Scavenger Hunt. So the Santa Cruz, what we did was on Friday, the 11th, first, we had our regular tree lighting with no people there, unfortunately, because of the pandemic. And we Broadcast Media did a great job. They came and they filmed it for us. And it's on cable right now on Channel 5, and it's online. So we had a nice ceremony. We lit the tree like we always do. Facilities and Grounds did a great job. It really is nice out there. It's virtually a winter wonderland, especially tonight. So it looked really nice. And then from there, we started the cruise. And what we did is we took the lights and the village and everything that Facilities and Grounds did, and then we added nine other features that people could drive through and see. So from the safety of their car, they came through, and they saw things like, of course, Santa Claus was there. And we had a live reindeer, and Frosty the Snowman was there, and Freckles the Frog, which is our our department mascot, was there. They gave out gift bags. There was Christmas music blaring. The guy had a huge sound system, so people could hear it all over. And the event was totally free. It was done by sponsorship. And we were pleased to say that we had 568 cars that went through, and approximately 2,300 people enjoyed that evening. We do want to thank Facilities and Grounds and the Fire Department, Broadcast Media, Macomb County Sheriff's Department, who helped out that evening, always helps us out. And we want to thank our sponsors, Genesis Credit Union, Lombardo Homes, Plant and Moran, and the Kiwanis Club. The Kiwanis Club actually collected the Santa letters, so they did a great job for us. And personally, I'd like to tell you, we really want to thank the board. I got to tell you, I've been doing this a long time, and we have not had every board member had a tree lighting in many, many years. So we really appreciate that from our department. You were all there. You stayed, you worked, you helped, you passed out the goodie bags. That meant a lot to our department. A lot of people had commented on that, so we appreciate it. And of course, again, I'd like to thank my staff. Michelle did a great job. The staff always, you know, comes together for stuff like this. So that was an event that did kick in the holiday. Goes into the second event, that evening also at 7:00. We posted on Facebook, and we also passed out in the goodie bags that the board passed out the clues to the Silverbells Scavenger Hunt. Scavenger Hunt was from December 11th through December 13th, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We put bells through six locations throughout the township. Like I said, the clues were given out on Facebook. And happy to report that 145 families participated in that. So we estimate about 600 people participated. Again, that was totally free. Both of the events are getting very good reviews as far as feedback on our website. We would like to thank Dick's Sporting Goods. Dick's donated the prizes. So there were four winners. All the winners got a $50 gift card to Dick's, and they also got a family four-pack to the rec center. Again, we'd like to thank Facility Grounds, and I'd like to thank my staff, Gina Mizinski and Chris Step really put that together. Did a great job. And also, I'd like to thank the six locations, the bells, if you participated and didn't finish. The bells were at Emmanuel Church, Emmanuel Lutheran Church. They were at Fire Station Number 3. They were at Suburban Ice Arena, Saint Isidore Church, Imagine Theater, and Clinton McComb North Branch. So we really appreciate them allowing to let us come and put the bells there. And it was a great way to kick off the holiday season, and it was a really good event, both of them were. We appreciate the support.
Thank you, Sal. By chance, do you have the winners' names with you?
I don't have them with me, I'm sorry.
Did we post them on the website, though, correct?
They're posted on the website, yeah, and on Facebook, yes.
Overall, I think the event went great. I'm proud of your staff. Jason Gelli's staff did a great job also. Everybody that pitched in, our firefighters, the chief, our sheriffs came and helped us out. Overall, I think everything went very well. And Sal, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this earlier. We did have a few people message the supervisor's office with a couple of concerns, because the line was so long, and it went all the way out onto 25 Mile. I heard all the way down to Romeo Plank at one point. Some of the children didn't get a chance to drop off their letters. Oh, their parents electronically sent them to the Parks and Recs Department. The parents were concerned that those electronic letters may not have been sent to the North Pole. Do you know anything whether they've been transmitted to the North Pole?
I believe we can take care of that. I believe they have. Anything that was sent to us in the last few days through tomorrow will be sent to the North Pole, just in time to get it before Christmas.
I think they got some kind of error coming back. Not exactly sure. I mean, they sent it to parks-rack@macomb.me, that's your email, right?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I happen to have, you know, a lot of experience with unauthorized software being installed on computers. And I heard that an unauthorized software program installed cookies on the Parks and Recreation computers, which could have interfered with the transmission of the Santa letters to the North Pole. Maybe we should ask our IT manager if he could explain how these mysterious cookies could have affected the transmission of these Santa letters.
Bob, could you shine a light on that for us, please?
Sure. Yes, Madam Clerk. I did extensive research on this unauthorized installation of cookies on the township computers. The cookies, I found out that originated from the North Pole. And upon careful inspection, I can assure that this board, they're harmless. Christmas cookies, they're common with the computer systems this time of year. This event, almost, it's not that common, but it also, when it happens, is known as Cookiegate.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ivanowski. I'm relieved to know that it's simply the Christmas cookies that prevented the parents from taking the proper notice, that all of the electronically submitted letters did in fact make it to the North Pole. Since we're talking about our holiday preparedness, Mr. Maples, I had a question, some of our residents for you. Some of our residents contacted my office. They're concerned that their annual chimney inspections hadn't been completed so far. And I know those inspections are something you do every year, and they're required under our building code under the chimney clause. I think you refer to that as the Santa Claus. Can you give us an update on our chimney inspections, and can you assure the residents that they'll all be completed by December 24th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We are working overtime to get this, all the chimneys inspected. It's something we do on an annual basis to make sure that Santa Claus will be safe going down those chimneys. We will be working overtime. If anyone has a timeframe that needs to be attended to, have them call the Building Department, and we'll set up a special inspection for them.
Thank you, Mr. Maples. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Treasurer Drollet?
I have a question for our Finance Director.
Okay. Ms. Smith, are you still on the line, please?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Me all right?
Okay.
Yes. Typically, after a county event or program, we'll do, the Finance Department or the Treasurer will do a cost benefit analysis. But I understand that this particular event, because it was completely covered by the generosity of sponsors, we don't really do a cost benefit analysis. Have you had a chance to do a clause benefit analysis of this particular event?
I'm working on it currently.
Treasurer Drollet, if I may?
Yes.
It's probably unfair to ask the Finance Director a clause benefit question. I think we should probably direct that question to a clause benefit expert. Maybe the supervisor could help us out with that.
I agree with the clerk on this one, Treasurer Drollet. Let me, if you would indulge me, I think we have one of our consultants. Let me see if I can get him on the line.
Yes, please.
Hold on one second. He has a special phone.
Is that one of those new iPhones?
No, it's a Santa song.
Oh, Santa song, okay.
Hold on, it's jingling, hold on.
Ho, 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 hello!
Mr. Kringle, Mr. Kringle, how are you, sir?
Oh, I am doing excellent today.
Well, I, you know, I'm really glad I was able to get you. I'm sorry to bother you. I know you're really busy. But Treasurer Drollet was asking about the clause benefit of the event that took place last weekend that you attended, in fact. Do you think you could let us know what you thought of the event?
Well, I thought it was absolutely sandtastic. I always look forward to coming to McComb Township every Christmas, and this year it was truly one of the best.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I please ask the consultant that?
Oh, sure. Hold on.
Thank you. Hello, Santa?
Hello.
I have a question. Perhaps I'm asking more on behalf of Trustee Kuzmato. But I was curious as to whether or not the naughty and nice list that we keep every year are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. Are those public documents, and how long do you keep those documents?
Oh, Mr. Treasurer, those lists are a secret, and only I have access to them. And maybe that's something you should be grateful for.
Okay, thank you, Santa.
That didn't go as expected. So, Mr. Kringle, you know, again, I don't want to take too much of your time tonight. I know how busy you are, and that it takes an enormous amount of time for you to prepare for, to supply all of the children each year with toys. Just out of curiosity, can you tell us, how do you know in advance which toys are going to be popular here? And this year, what has been the most popular Christmas wish?
Well, that's a really good question. Um, I've created a subsidiary company to do statistical polls of children to find out which toys are the most popular. It's called the North Polling Company. Um, more than anything else this year, the McComb Township children wanted their family and friends to be safe and healthy during this holiday season. They really want a vaccine that defeats COVID so that next year they can spend much more time with their family and friends.
Well, I, you know, I, I think I agree with the vast majority of people who've had that Christmas, Christmas wish. Uh, Santa, I'm not going to hold you up any longer. I know you have a lot to do. I know the children of our township are really excited about your arrival. Um, on behalf of our entire board, our staff, and our residents, uh, we wish you the very merriest of Christmases, and we are very excited for all the joy and, and, and love that you're going to be delivering in the very near future.
Well, Merry Christmas to you and everyone in McComb Township.
Merry Christmas, Santa.
Merry Christmas, Santa.
All right, so that concludes our holiday review. Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.
Uh, moving on to our next item is, uh, our legal counsel's, um, update. Mr. Hollitt?
Thank you. Quite an act to follow. Nothing says Christmas quite like legal counsel update, but if I could specifically address Treasurer Jollette's question, it is not, the naughty and nice list is not covered by FOIA. That's subject to the attorney clause privilege. Um, I don't, I don't want to take too much of your time, and, and that was great fun, and, and was happy to participate in that. But since the transition was so rapid, um, between counsel, I just wanted to give the, the board a quick update. Uh, the Bodman team is in place. We've got several members, uh, at lower billing rates than the, um, cap that we had previously discussed, working in their specific areas of expertise, um, to cover the, the matters that are most outstanding. Uh, we have access to the files now. I think we have a very good handle on what's going on, and, uh, you know, just by way of sort of updating understanding, there are about six circuit court actions, uh, that we're monitoring. Probably two of those require some, um, intervention on our part. Nothing serious, but status conference, things like that, monitoring the docket. Uh, there are about fifteen tax appeal matters that we're on top of, um, two of which, again, require some intervention. Um, there's approximately fourteen real estate slash planning commission matters that we have a real estate expert, uh, that's on top of and monitoring, and there's been just a couple of HR-type questions. So I, I didn't want to take it up any more time than just to say that we're aware of the situation. We've got a good handle on what's going on. I've got some really good people in place helping out, and we feel very good about, um, getting the, the ship sort of balanced and then moving forward in a very cost-effective and efficient manner.
Thank you, Mr. Hollitt. Uh, just for the board, I've been working with Mr. Hollitt and his team, uh, as has, uh, a number of our department heads. The, the, the volume of work we have dumped on them in a very short amount of time is, is staggering, and, uh, they've done a great job getting up to speed very quick. Uh, we, we currently have five different attorneys from their office, all with different specialties, who are helping us on various matters, which is one of the very reasons I suggested that we go with them, because they have that ability to ramp up very fast and very large. Uh, they're helping us slug through our backlog of legal matters. Um, and hopefully by the time we get through our RFP for new legal counsel, uh, they will have everything in such a manner that they can very smoothly transition it over to new counsel. So, or as that goes, it's been going well, but it has been an enormous amount of work. So.
I would, I would concur with that, but, but that is why we have the team in place, and, you know, what we're very conscientious of and careful of is not to overlap. So it's not, you know, there aren't multiple people on single issues. It's, it's spreading the team around to address as many issues as quickly as possible with a person most knowledgeable and most efficient in that area.
Thank you. Um, is there any, anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Hollitt, as long as we have them? No? Okay, so let's move on to trustee comments. Uh, Trustee Cusmano?
I would just like to thank all the, um, wish a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all the taxpayers, the township employees, and my fellow board members and their families. We're, they're all outstanding, and I'm proud to be a member of this board, and I think we all have a part to play in the story of McComb Township. We are McComb Township after all. We are the best and the brightest. Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Trustee Oliver?
Uh, yes. Uh, December ninth, uh, was our last planning, uh, public, McComb. It was the, uh, meeting for the, a Zoom meeting for the master plan. Now we're going to have a few more, but they're not going to be in Zoom, uh, so we concluded that, and, uh, I had a great time on the Santa Cruz. Uh, it was great. It was really neat. Uh, live reindeers, pretty good stuff. Twenty-three hundred people, that's impressive, and, and that, that's the stuff that really shows the brightness of McComb, and shows what, together what we could do. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, all the staff, uh, Leanna, Frank, Christie, and you, you guys all worked entirely on it. Uh, Sal, if you're still listening, thank you. So it was great. We had a great time, and, uh, other than that, I want to thank all the residents, wish them all Merry, Happy, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and, uh, hopefully twenty-twenty-one will be on our way. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Nevers?
Well, first of all, I, I thoroughly enjoyed the, um, skit. I have a feeling that Trustee, uh, excuse me, Treasurer Jollette did the writing on that.
How'd you figure that out?
He was a very witty guy, and, uh, I really enjoyed it. A lot of levity, and I particularly liked the bling that Christie has brought to the season, and, uh, we all needed that laugh. It was good. Uh, I'd just like to wish everyone out there, uh, in the listening audience and the viewing audience, I hope everyone has a pleasant and beautiful Christmas, and great for our country. Thank you.
Amen. Trustee Lucido?
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, number one, I just want to thank the supervisor for heading the task of, uh, looking into the property inventory that the township has. I think that's long overdue. I think it's a great thing to give a hand. Um, to the Parks and Recs, uh, Department, Sal, the Santa Cruz was great. I had a terrific time, um, you know, getting to, you know, speak with the residents, handing out bags and candy canes. Uh, I had a terrific time. So anytime you need me to do that, I'm here to do that for the next four years, that's for sure. Um, and again, just to the residents, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, uh, be safe.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Treasurer's comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in having the chance to work the Santa Cruz with the rest of the sport, I think the highlight of that was we were at the end of the cruise. So we got to see the cars as they were leaving, and the smiles on the faces of the kids were amazing, and it all, so wild. They had a chance to see, uh, that kind of joy, uh, that we were able to contribute toward, and I, I want that kind of happiness and joy for all the residents of our, our community, our township. I certainly, uh, increasingly appreciative of both our community because of the stress that we've gone through in the last year, that the way our community in McComb Township has come together and supported each other has been a silver lining of the problems, and also of the amazing, uh, uh, staff here at McComb Township that I've had the opportunity to meet in the last few weeks since we've taken, uh, our positions on this board. So we are a very blessed community, and I want everyone to enjoy a terrific, uh, Christmas and Merry Christmas and great holiday season.
Thank you, Treasurer Jollette. Clerk's comments?
Um, I would just like to say that, um, the highlight, obviously, has been the Santa Cruz and, um, most, and the scavenger hunt. We had a ton of feedback, uh, with regards to both events, and those that I know that participated in the scavenger hunt, uh, even went on to say they had so much fun meeting residents at the locations. They were taking turns, taking pictures, so it even brought community together at all the locations for the scavenger hunt. Uh, the three of us went out earlier in the day to test out the scavenger hunt, and, you know, as kind of a funny part of it, we thought collecting all the bells and taking them back to the rec center and saying we won was funny. The Parks and Rec Director didn't find it that funny, though. Um, but we really enjoyed both events. Um, the Santa Cruz, I'm so proud, I was so proud to be a part of that. The lighting and the work that went into that, um, by our Parks and Rec Department and Grounds and Facilities was absolutely phenomenal, and it was a great event to be a part of. I really am enjoying the new board and, uh, all that we engage in, uh, to make the community a very, very fun place to be. So I just want to wish everybody a safe and peaceful Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Uh, for supervisor's comments, I do have a few housekeeping matters. Uh, the ethics committee applications are still being accepted. Um, please spread the word. Uh, we have finally in the last day or two gotten, um, a few more applications. Uh, I'm going to hold the app, the time for submitting applications open until the close of business on Monday, January fourth. So it'll be four-thirty on January fourth. At such time, we'll review all of the applications. I'm hoping that by holding it open over the holidays, that more residents will have the opportunity to consider, um, participating and choose to do so. Um, we do have a few good applicants, but I think having a, a healthy number of applications to choose from is in the best interest of the township. Um, our parks, I want to address. Uh, in discussions with Mr. DeCarlo and, and the prompting of a number of residents, uh, it, the decision has been made that we're going to make an effort to keep all of our parks, well, our two of our parks open, Wollenberg and Corners, uh, for people who want to walk and use the paths. Uh, on clear days when there is no precipitation on the ground, no chance of ice or snow, uh, the parks will be open from eight to five. Uh, in the case of any weather event, the parks will remain closed until such time as we can send some staff over there to get the paths clear. We, we will keep them closed for safety reasons, but we'll make every effort to get them open in time for the sunny days. I want to thank, um, our planner, Mr. Bach, our building director, Mr. Maples, uh, and our fire chief and his staff for all of the work that they've done over the past couple of weeks in helping our local businesses. Uh, it has been a really bad struggle, uh, for them. They're, they're, they're really doing everything they can to stay afloat. Uh, the township is making every accommodation it can in order to get, um, either, whether it's outdoor permits for dining or any other accommodation we can make to them, uh, so they can stay afloat. And with, under the direction of Chief Phillips, Mr. Maples, and Mr. Bach, we've been able to do that and do it in a way that is, keeps our safety standards very high so that none of our residents would ever be, um, at risk by going to some of these establishments. I've actually gone to some of them. I hope everyone chooses to frequent our local establishments in any way that they can. They certainly, right now, need our support. Um, and I would like to join everybody else's Christmas wishes. Uh, I think that this year more than ever, we need to take this holiday season and remember, uh, you know, a little, remember what it's like just to be normal for just a minute, maybe Christmas morning or Christmas Eve night, whatever your family tradition is. I hope you embrace it. I hope we embrace your children. Um, I know, I know how frustrated my family has been with, you know, not being able to go out, not being able to see, you know, my mother and their friends, and I think we should just do our best to put that behind us for a little bit and embrace the season. So I want to wish all of McComb Township a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Scored.
Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Jollette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
God bless us one and all.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
For the last time in twenty-twenty, ding dong, let twenty-twenty be dead. Long live twenty-twenty-one. This meeting is adjourned. The time is eight forty-eight.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.